Same thing.
Uh huh.
Um, get out of here.
It's like the little sweat in there and the little...
Oh, he's...
The two C April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two Blaston Town Council meeting order. Um, all of council is present and we will start with the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilwoman Frazier?
Everyone bow their heads. Heavenly Father, right now we just come thanking you for everything. We'd like to thank you for the ability to lead and serve our town. We'd like to thank you for all of our residents here as well as our staff. Acts that you continue to give us the guidance and the wisdom needed to make decisions on the betterment of all. These are our blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Um, is there any changes on the agenda, Mr. Stevens?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Yes.
Is there second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to go into executive session for three items? Contractual matters pertaining to our town's designated marketing organization. That's FOIA thirty-four seventy A two. For legal advice pertaining to Beaufort County impact fees. That's Act FOIA three thirty-four seventy A two. And negotiations relating to negotiations and contractual arrangements for proposed land acquisition at Buckwalter Place. And again, it's the FOIA Act thirty-four seventy A two.
So, ma'am. Second.
Any discussion? Um, we will leave for anyone who's hanging around and um, then we'll cut back out for five. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session.
Good afternoon, everyone. There is a motion out of executive session that we will make here regarding executive session. The contractual matters pertaining to the town's DMO. Is there a motion to accept the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce as the 2023 Town's Designated Marketing Organization?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Opposed, unanimous. That's unanimous. From everybody, we switch things up a little bit. Try to help staff actually get home earlier than normal and we do an executive session a little bit early. Adoption of the minutes. If you had a chance to look over them, are there any changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the March 8, 2022 minutes?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. And we have presentations. That's the first one. So we have a few presentations tonight. The first, bringing up County School District's Teacher of the Month. And if we can bring up Alexia. Is there a teacher this year? Anybody who's with Alexia?
At Michael C. Riley? Wait, Michael C. Riley? Oh, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
What grade are you in? Oh, my gosh. Oh, wow, she's a delight. Alexia Lopez was nominated by her third grade teacher, Mrs. Leonard at Michael C. Riley. I know. Would you like to speak as why you, um... Now, y'all need to fix these guys right here. You see, why has she been, oh, was she nominated for the Character Trait of the Month, which was integrity and honesty?
Um, Alexia is a fantastic student and we are just really lucky to have her in class because she supports all of her classmates and she helps them to learn to the best of her abilities. And she always tries her best on her work. We work on something called a week goal and she's always trying her best to meet that goal every single month and just work really hard and share and be honest and respectful.
Raise your hands. Thank you. During, I've said a lot this last week. We were talking about COVID and I said, you know, one thing I've figured out about this last two years. Um, the mean people have gotten meaner, but the nice people have gotten nicer. And I think that describes you. You had a lot of niceness to start with. But you're the first one we've had back since all of this. So, um, we have a wonderful certificate for you and we have this really special coin. We don't give out to too many people. So you're collectibles. People collect these things. Um, this young lady, for all the people in the room that are new, is, um, our school district, our cluster is half of our school district. It's just the Bluffton Cluster. So every elementary school, every middle school, every high school nominate students. And it whittles down, whittles down and ends up with one and you're it out of almost 14,000 students that do this Character Trait of the Month. So we don't pay school, the school bills or anything like that. That falls in the county, but we love to celebrate our residents. So this is for you and this is for you. And are we going to get a picture? And Tia's going to take our picture. Do y'all, no, no, no. Do you want to say anything you can as well?
I just want to thank you and all of the council members for hosting this wonderful character education program for our students in our schools. It's so important to recognize students doing the right thing each and every day. And so we feel like our community really supports us and we appreciate that so much. My name is Mrs. Holland. I'm the new principal at Michael C. Riley this year and I welcome anyone to come visit anytime and see our school now that we're open as well in person. So we'd love to have anybody come.
Spread that out?
Yeah.
Do you need us to talk about me? We'll do it, okay? Okay. Here we go. Good. This is for you. Thank you for coming. Now go get ice cream. Senator Brown, who's on there, Alexi...
You'll meet her. She is the community sister and, right?
Talking about you. You've had an haircut though. I almost thought I pulled out the wrong person. Next is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Do we have anybody? Yes? Oh, come forward.
So exciting.
So it's right here. I love having you all here. How are y'all? Thank you. Whereas, I haven't read these in so long, I'm sorry. Whereas, South Carolina's future prosperity is dependent on nurturing the healthy development of the 1.1 million children currently residing in the diverse communities across our state. Whereas, all children deserve to have safe, stable nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas, in fiscal year 2021, there were 8,949 children in founded investigations of maltreatment in our state, in South Carolina. Uh, child abuse is a public health issue and a serious societal consequences as data shows the link between abuse and neglect of children in a wide range of costly medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral problems into adulthood. Whereas, preventing child abuse and neglect must be a priority that requires individuals, families, youth-serving organizations, faith-based groups, businesses, government agencies, and everyone that makes up our community to support the physical, emotional, and educational development of all children in their families. Whereas, effective child abuse prevention exists in communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with the stress and nurture their children, help to ensure that all children can grow into full potential. Therefore, for being resolved, ALI Salka, along with the Bluffton Town Council, in conjunction, in conjunction with Hopeful Horizons, Child Abuse Prevention Association, KAPA, and support services programs around the state designates the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. But you are so kind. I'm really smiling, so I'm looking to him. See, you're a lot of that. Picture and then y'all can chat.
Thank you.
So.
We have a wonderful staff, a wonderful CEO, and a lot of work to do. And we just thank you for this recognition.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it so much.
Thank you. Together to help our community, all of the Low Country community, KAPA serves. And we just thank you all for the acknowledgement and making this month, um, everyone aware that child abuse exists in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Fair Housing Month. Anyone here?
I think that's Kevin.
Kevin? Okay. Arbor Day proclamation. Anyone here? I'll read them for a minute here.
So we do this every month. Um, it is April. It's going to be Fair Housing Month and I'll just read a little bit. Uh, this year marks the 54th anniversary of the signing of Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Act as amended, which guarantees fair housing opportunities for all Americans. The town of Bluffton rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, and our family status in the sale, rental, or provision of other housing services. As a community, we welcome all good neighbors, recognizing the contributions and richness tendered by a wide variety of young and old, male and female, people of all colors, ethnic backgrounds, and religious traditions. Whereas, interested parties from both the private and public sectors will participate in the town, state, and national effort to promote fair housing. Therefore, ALI Salka, Mayor of the Town of Bluffton, along with Bluffton Town Council proclaim the month of April 2022 as Fair Housing Month to establish Bluffton as an inclusive community committed to fair housing for all residents and prospective residents of Bluffton. And finally, Arbor Day. Arbor Day is in April, April 29. In 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. The holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Um, trees are a renewable resource, giving us wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, paper, roots, and nets for nourishment, and countless other goods and products. And when properly selected, planted in the right places, and intended appropriately, trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Whereas, the Town of Bluffton, the Bluffton Town Council and Beautification Committee are, are committed to Tree is the Key Tree Management Program that promotes a safe, healthy, and attractive urban forest. Therefore, ALI Salka, Mayor of the Town of Bluffton, along with my council, do hereby proclaim April 29 Arbor Day as Arbor Day in the Town of Bluffton and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands. Further, we urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. And we are having a tree planting on Arbor Day.
At Oscar Frazier Park.
At Oscar Frazier Park. So follow our...
Sorry, I was about to...
You should have been up here to get this. I would have read it to you. So that very big month. I rode down Buckwalter and I don't know if many of y'all know this, but when, uh, former manager Josh Martin was here, someone donated three trees and I rode by there today and I realized how big they've gotten and they planted them on the right side, right near Pine Ridge. And if you go past that first road on the right, you'll see huge trees and they're, what, 15, 15 years old and really make a statement. So we, all of our small trees we plant do grow and it was a good memory when I rode down today and I realized they were, they were there. So, um, okey doke. Next is, um, DMO, Destination Marketing Organization Annual Marketing Plan, Report of Progress and Actions. Arianna, good to see you in person. All of you in person, by the way.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to provide you an update. My name is Arianna Pernice. I am the Vice President and the Visiting Convention Bureau for the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce. So we are excited to just bring forward the report that you've already seen, but it's recapping fiscal year Q2. So we just like to make sure that we're keeping you abreast of everything that's going on in terms of tourism, but also making sure the community knows as well. So if you will, I'm going to go through the deck. I click through and I done?
You want that?
Okay. We're going to, so I can just swipe it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Okay. Here we go. So quick metric update. Um, one of the touchpoints that we like to look at is, um, from a destination metrics is, um, where our tourism dollars are generated from, which is our bed tax. So we look at occupancy, average daily rate, and revenue per available room. And from a three-month overview, you can see here that it's a really good story. And again, it is a few months back. So, um, we're, we just want to tell you essentially that we had ended the calendar year, or what we're saying is Q2 fiscal year, very strong. And we're headed into Q3 and, um, the wind is at our back and, and things are looking really great for the destination. So, um, that continued momentum of a place that is, um, not only an amazing place for our community, but also a wonderful place for all of our visitors to come, um, and visit and call home for either a few nights or a few weeks or longer. We also look at our social media. Again, this is from the timeframe of October through December. And again, the story here is that Facebook continues to be, um, the strongest platform. However, Instagram, as you know, is, um, a really fast follower. So we engage on the Facebook, um, platform very regularly. And we do as well with Instagram. And Instagram, we like to engage with a lot of the stories. We encourage those that are visiting as well as community members to tag, to tag us as a destination and we start to tell those stories. And we really want to create that long conversation. Um, we did, um, transition back into promoting, um, a bit on Twitter, but we had left that for a bit to promote our YouTube and Pinterest channels. So we are starting to reengage on Twitter. But we like to think of Twitter as more of that real-time opportunity, um, when things are happening in the moment, um, versus kind of a longer tourism story. Looking specifically again at the website, that virtual front door for the destination, October through December. Again, noting that the website is a standalone piece, launched, um, back in March 31st of 2021. So we're getting to that benchmark point where we can start comparing it to a year over year. But just as a standalone, we had for that, um, October through December timeframe, 61,000 visits, which is great. But what I like to look at is how many of those people who visited took a handshake out to one of our local businesses. And really, that's our, our goal here and objective is to make sure that we're bringing those businesses forward. So that we had over 11,000 referrals, um, there. And we are in our second year of the official Bluffton Vacation Planner, a very, a piece that we're very proud of. That is, um, been distributed. We've worked very closely with the town on this effort, hopefully building a really strong foundation so that from the years going forward, we will, um, be able to use that foundation and grow even larger. So that is both in print and digital on the website and been distributed out. Um, and we look at that distribution. It is to South Carolina Welcome Centers. It is to the hotels, to the Welcome Center. We did some at the, um, town offices here. And we also fulfill for anyone who outreaches via mail, email, um, or phone call or walk-in. From an events standpoint, for that timeframe, we held over 20 events and there were over a thousand participants. And we go back to the public relations opportunity for that same timeframe. So locally, we were engaged in talking about, um, just overall the destination as a whole, but also as a community, how are we getting together and celebrating the businesses, um, that are, um, also our neighbors and friends? And then we look at the public relations. When we look at that public relations piece, it's taking all those great stories. And it's, um, Charlie and all the great work that she does with her team. And she's out, paving pavement, telling those stories. And so we look at, um, that timeframe of October through December. She had 43 placements. Um, and these are just a handful of the publications that were, um, of those 43. And again, we talked through a little bit this last time, but if we were to go out and place those, if we were to say, we want to buy those 43 placements, it would have been that 215, um, number there. But right now, those, I mean, as a standalone PR, that was the 43 placements that she earned, um, with her efforts of, of creating relationships and outreach and pushing the destination as a whole. So that was a really great, great opportunity there for those three months. Looking at the paid media partnerships piece, um, we, many of you saw when we were at the Historic Arts and Seafood Festival, we had a partnership with, um, Garden &amp; Gun and Vanita Aspen during that time. And, and we're really excited about this. I know it's been a little while since we've been able to talk about it, but, um, we wanted to make sure it was brought to you in the right timeframe, which we were really happy. You have a, um, a deeper dive into the partnership in your packet, but the, um, it really did pay dividends for us as a destination. We were really excited because you had the Buy with Garden &amp; Gun, which was across all of their channels, website, digital, social media. And then it also hit their e-news. And then in addition, Vanita Aspen came in and she took her channel and engaged all of her partners and her friends. She embraced and engaged a lot of the local businesses here, engaged with the, um, event itself. And then we also shouted it from the rooftop. So you kind of had three different touchpoints. We built content that we can use going forward. And more importantly, we built a deeper relationship with a new partner such as, um, Vanita, and also a deeper relationship with Garden &amp; Gun. And along the way, we garnered some new, um, new followers and new friends at the destination, which is always great.
And that's it?
Questions? Um, when these things happen, how do we...
When these things happen, how do we get that message if any of us want to be around to see them, to just kind of know? I mean, and I followed up with that, like, in the magazines? I know we used to get magazines with the little papers. We seem to be missing that.
Okay, we're absolutely bringing those to you, and as they come to together, we'll make sure that you're a full itinerary of what's going on, and that you get any follow-up. This one was mostly digital, but we'll make sure you get a printout, and you can see all of them as well. Anyone else, guys?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Happy Heritage. A great week.
Thank you very much.
Public comment. We have public comment during our council meetings. They're three minutes in length. There are some very simple requests we make. They all kind of go to the same thing, just kind of keep your thoughts under the jurisdiction of what we can do. Please be respectful. As you see, we had young children that are, that are here, and sometimes they stay, and sometimes classes ask their students to come sit in, so we just want them to see that we can be respectful to council and anyone in the, in the audience. When you come up, please tell us your name and address, even though we may know you, but we need it for our minutes, and you have three minutes. So, we will start. John Tooten. Is John Tooten here? That's you. Oh, but it, but I can't get this, but you, you don't want to speak, because this doesn't go in the minutes if you don't speak.
Oh, no, I'm good.
You're good. Well, hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
Well, there you go. Thank you for being here. Sharon Brown. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharon Brown, and I live at 163 Buck Allen Road. So, I come here with a concern, no complaint, but a concern. And this is in reference to, I'm going to go back to the vision, your vision statement. It says, "Bluffton, the heart of the Low Country, a town that appreciates the past, focuses on today, and is planning together for a greater future." So, my concern is that within this town of Bluffton, we have, we have 100 employees, 100, it says you have 100 employees who work for the town of Bluffton. How many of those people are people of color? We sit here and we look around, you, you guys are pretty diverse, but in every area that I've been in, the only person that you guys have hired a person of color is in that community development department, where you had four African-Americans in there, back-to-back. So, on these high-end jobs, you guys promoted Heather, and Mr. Chris, and internally, how do you guys promote within? Do you educate, or is there a training class that some of your people of color can be promoted? You know, we are a very diverse town, and it says right here, it says, "The HR Department of the Town of Bluffton is an equal opportunity employer." There are HBC colleges close by, because you guys can get interns, that you can prep them to have jobs here in this town, and we need to do a better job. So, that's my concern, because some of your employees, especially up front, they probably need sensitivity training, the way that they talk to people. You know, I've called, and Charlotte, it took four months for me to get somebody to talk to about my issue that I was concerned about Buck Allen, Simmonsville Road, and Goethe Road. So, you know, as we smile with one another, and, oh, you know, hey, yeah, I love you and all that, let's make sure that we make the town of Bluffton diverse enough that we can really feel that, okay? Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Public comment is closed. Communications from Mayor and Council.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to say that Saturday night, and Sharon was there, and she was looking beautiful, the Greater Bluffton Chamber of Commerce held their function over at the Hayward House, and Bluffton Jasper Volunteers in Medicine won Nonprofit of the Year, the Golden Oyster Award, so I was very proud of that. Just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
No, thanks for meeting.
Is he on this side?
Bridgette. I just wanted to say that the Bluffton Gala Markets have resumed this season, and the first will be this Friday at Martin Family Park from 11:00 to 6:00.
I just want to say Happy Easter to everyone. See you in church.
I'll tidy it up. I want to brag about Bridgette didn't say something that her Martin Luther King Committee did, so I'll start with that. She, Bluffton MLK, called me and said, "Would you meet us? We want to surprise and feed a company's employees," and it's RSI, Resort Services, which is, was forever the largest employer, but I would say they are the largest minority employer, probably, further than our county. And they do a good job, and it was just a pleasure. And I hear, even today, someone was talking about it, that a group of people could come together, and it was great food, but just to show appreciation, and, and we can all do that to, to others. But anyway, good job, Bridgette. It's Heritage Week. Yes, it's on Hilton Head, and I went to the blast today and the kickoff, and you do hear a lot about Hilton Head, and Hilton Head, and Hilton Head, and Hilton Head, and Hilton Head. And you have to take that and respect it, but y'all have to realize how much that tournament does for our town. There were 14 scholars that won scholarships, and six of them went to Bluffton, or lived in Bluffton, or went to Bluffton School. So, that was amazing, and they, they won $4,000 to $5,000 a year for four years. Two came from Bluffton High, Sharon. And it was just great to see them there. But it's a great week, our nonprofits benefit, it is just so much we get from it. So, I am a big supporter of that, and saw our football team and wrestlers from Bluffton High, we're doing the, our recycling crew, and they get money from it, and I think May River has a play in it, but it was just great. So, hope y'all get out there. And Happy Easter. And I hear you, Sharon. We hear you, and, and hopefully you can maybe sit with Stephen, and y'all can discuss concerns, and let, maybe let him tell you what he's trying to implement, since he's over all the staff, and we're just over him. So, I hear you. Okay. Anything else? We're done. Workshop items. Discussion regarding indefinite delivery contracts for future capital improvement projects. Kim Jones, good?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And we appreciate it, Joni. I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about this idea of indefinite delivery contracts. We brought this up in strategic planning, and decided to bring it back with a little bit more information as an approach to help address some of the challenges that we're seeing in our capital improvement program to get bids on our projects. Just a quick background for folks' benefit in the audience, as the capital improvement program moves forward with construction of our projects, all of these are originating from town-adopted plans, ranging from our comprehensive plan through our strategic plans, our neighborhood plans, Old Town Master Plan, as well as the May River Watershed Action Plan. And all of these are done in guidance and alignment with the Purchasing Ordinance, which was adopted in 2010, as well as the Procurement Policy and Procedure Manual. And what's really important about this is that these documents are providing us the guidance, as you see in quotes, "to efficiently and economically procure goods and services to meet our goals in a transparent fashion for the public, so that they understand how their tax dollars are being spent." The challenge that we've really been seeing over the last year, especially a year and a half, coming out of the pandemic, it, let me step back a little bit from that, I'm hearing my own voice, is meeting the efficiently and economically response to getting these projects moving forward. Over the last year and a half, as I said, we've had at least five different projects that have not received any responses to our solicitations. When we've asked our general contractors, "Why not? What's, what's the issue that is, is precluding you from bidding these projects?" These are the top answers we get. Currently, their workload is just too heavy that they cannot accommodate our timeframe for when we're trying to initiate a project or complete it. Additionally, they're facing a labor shortage, just as most everyone else is, and so they just don't have the staffing to take on additional projects. And then, a lot of these projects, the ones that we've had, have had maybe one or two responses, and they've come in over what we've budgeted based on our design engineer's estimate of probable cause. That's being dictated by market conditions and supply chain issues. So, as we're getting these estimates, basing our fiscal year budgets on them, and our project budgets on them, they're being blown out of the water in some cases, just by, by what it is today. So, we have a couple of ideas to bring forward to discuss with you this evening, see if you're comfortable with them for us to pursue, and then report back to you on if, if we see that they're working, if we see a difference. This is an attempt to, as it says up there, increase bidder responsiveness. One of them is to establish indefinite delivery contracts. This is actually a concept that you're very familiar with in our master service agreements, but typically, we're using our MSAs, our master service agreements, for professional services. So, design engineers, plan reviews, things of that nature, surveying, that, along that line. What we're talking about with an IDC is essentially taking that concept and applying it to general contractors, and getting a pool of pre-qualified general contractors in our, in our, our system, if you will, so that we don't have to bid every individual project. We can take them forward with a task authorization. I'm going to talk more about process in a second, specifically with the IDC. And if at any point you have a question, it's workshop, please interrupt me. The other idea that we have is a little bit of a variation, same idea, indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, so an IDIQ contract. And this is a piggyback contract with Dorchester County. So, Dorchester procured this third-party company called a job-order contracting company of Gordian. Gordian's like a middleman. They have regional, pre-qualified general contractors that they've already established relationships with. And what can happen, and what Dorchester County has used them for, is any particular type of project they have, they'll say, "Gordian, this is it. Here's the scope of it. Come walk the site with us, with your, one of your GCs, or all three of them, and put a bid together for us for our review," and then deciding whether to award on that or not. This is permissible, a piggyback contract, both through the state and within our own town ordinance and procurement policy manual. So, what does that look like? This next slide is awful for text, but again, it's for the public to see it online and to explain some of this a little bit more in-depth. So, coming from the federal procurement data system, all right, what is an IDC? It's, it's a type of contract that can be awarded to one or more parties, and the intent is, again, to facilitate the delivery of supplies or services. So, when we're talking about an IDIQ, indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, that's where the supply comes in. We want 50 widgets. How much is that 50 widgets going to cost us? Well, we'll have a price quote set under an IDIQ with Gordian, that each one of those items has a locked price for a year for, in support of construction or getting supplies. Under the IDC, the idea is, again, very similar to our MSAs, where we use task authorizations or a task order. So, within the scope and time period of the contract that we would have our general contractors under, they could perform certain types of tasks or services for us, such as constructing sidewalks, constructing sewer, and we would get price quotes for each one of those with that level of service based on their pricing that came in with their, their contract. And we would follow the same process we currently follow, which is bringing, and I'm a little ahead of myself, you'll see it in a second, every $100,000 contract would still come back to you if it was greater than that. The, the delivery order, again, similar, it's a delivery of supplies during the timeframe of the contract, locked in at a price that's typically adjusted year by year for inflation. Anything on that in general? It's a lot of words. Yeah. So, what would we use these IDCs for? So, again, getting these pre-qualified general contractors under contract with us, that we would hopefully save some time in not bidding each project, that we'd have them pre-qualified, and we would hopefully then get more responsiveness out of our general contractors, since they've already responded once. Some of the different types of work that could be accomplished are, I don't know what that was.
Joe.
Is it Joe? What are you doing right there? Some of the different types of work that can typically be completed under an IDC fall exactly in line with what we're trying to accomplish with our capital improvement program. From repairs of buildings, improvements of facilities, as well as our parks, playgrounds, doing our horizontal hardscapes with streetscapes, with sidewalks, with streets, with sewer, our stormwater, you get the idea. The other thing that could be of benefit is outside of the Projects and Watershed Resilience Department and Helping and Growth Management, that if we have pre-qualified GCs, that we could help out the Neighborhood Assistance Program, because I know sometimes there, she's also, Vicky, Ms. Vicky's also struggling to get responses to help with the Neighborhood Assistance Program. So, there could be some additional benefits as well. Now, this is an awful slide, but it comes, it, it shows everybody, again, in, in the idea of transparency, and I know we all hate this. All we're going to say is, there's staff homework and pre-acquisition before everything goes out to any type of a bid. Then, depending upon what that need is, how we're going to source it, how much is it going to cost, and depending upon that cost threshold, it's going to kick it into different types of solicitations. How are we going to bid that out? How are we going to get that product, that good, or that service? And then, dependent upon that solicitation, and where we think it's going to fall in a price range, we're going to put it under different types of contracts with approval authorities. And what's most important, and let me pull out the salient points on the next slide, is once those contracts are approved, and we're moving into receiving goods and services, there is a life cycle to procurement from the beginning to the end, and this is the process the town follows, and all transparency for everyone. What's really important out of that procurement life cycle is that contracts from zero, which is really easy to sign for, to $50,000 are at the department director's approval level, and that interim period, interim, interim point, between $50,000 and $100,000 is the town manager. And then, anything over $100,000 is the town manager's authorization with council's prior approval. When we're talking about IDCs, we're not talking about changing any of this. Again, it's working within the town's existing process. And what is really of import is that last sub-bullet, where the MSA that we perceive would be greater than $100,000 over the aggregate five-year period that typically these contracts last, we bring those MSAs to you in advance as well, so that you know that we're probably going to award more than $100,000 worth of work to an MSA. The IDCs would be the same way. Considering that we're talking about capital projects of $50,000 or more, easily over the span of a potential five-years contract, they're going to hit that $100,000 mark. So, again, you would be seeing these IDCs coming forward, and then individual task authorizations underneath them would come forward, typically in consent agenda, just like they do today under MSAs. So, if we follow this process through, what we envision potentially doing, if you're comfortable with it, is issuing two request for qualifications, RFQUs. And that will, again, get us pre-qualified, and we're envisioning the candidates' GCs for horizontal structures, right? That this is, again, the streetscapes, the sewer-ing, the sidewalks, as well as vertical structures. Typically, your general contractors are specializing in one of those two fields, so we feel like we could get a good pool underneath each one of those. Within the RFQU, very similar, again, to what we're using for MSAs, we're looking for that contractor's experience, their qualifications, any local vendor preference that we have, all set out within our ordinance currently and our processes and procedures. What's important is, under the IDCs, just like under our MSAs, we're not guaranteeing anybody any minimum amount or maximum amount of work. We're just saying, within this timeframe, again, typically about five years, you are meeting the town's qualifications for us to come and talk to you about projects that we have, and ask for you to give us back a quote on what it would take to construct this project, and in what timeframe. Sometimes, again, we're issuing, "We need it started now," and they might not be available for three months because they're on a job. Well, tell us your timeframe, and we can negotiate that if you're already pre-qualified. Using all our existing contracts and terms, none of that changes, and again, each task authorization above $100,000 would come back to you typically in consent agenda. So, if we went the Gordian and/or the Gordian route, which is what we're suggesting, is using both of them, that's just doing the RFQs for our IDCs, getting our own general contractor pool. And then, this additional option is, we have this Gordian piggyback contract that we can use, where they have already approved general contractors on a regional basis that we can use. They're, again, they're the mediator, if you will. They're, again, they're the mediator, if you will. They're a third-party, Gordian. So they line us up with their pre-approved general contractors. We can piggyback on this, and it's very similar to us piggybacking on the state contract for state vehicles, right? This is a larger contract. We can usually get a cost savings of some set in that for a vehicle, at least. In this particular instance, using Gordian, we would contract with their GC, and that contract, if it's over $100,000, again, would come forward, just like all the other ones would. The interesting thing about the IDIQ with Gordian is, because they have their prices locked in for over, I think it was 2,600 different types of items that could be used on a construction job, you know how much each item is going to cost, locked in for a year, and then there can be price adjustments with inflation each year, but we would know that upfront. So we definitely have a really good price proposal accuracy, which is something we seem to be struggling now, that we're getting from the engineers, sometimes, again, because things are so volatile right now. They could be accurate when we get that design engineer drawing, but by the time we get the bids back in, prices have fluctuated that much. This will lock prices in. And so we have increased cost control and certainty of price as well. That thing is all 100% foolproof, candy-coated, and sugarcane, right? There are some potential drawbacks here with this approach, with using our own IDCs and the Gordian. We would be using pre-qualified folks, so we could potentially lose some competitive bidding by individually bidding each project. Additionally, because of some grant, pre-qualifications aren't necessarily admissible or permissible by each granting agencies. Some are more lenient than not. It is always in the town's purview, and if it's in our best interest to fall back onto our existing process and the way we've been doing things, we can do that. So if we need, if the level of effort is worth a grant, then obviously, we would go for the grant, and if we needed to competitively bid, individually bid a project, we would do that. If we get bids back from our IDCs, or a quote back from Gordian, and it just seems exorbitant, and we just don't feel it's the best interest of the town to meet its goals, again, we could individually bid that. So we retain that authority to do that. So moving forward, as this is a workshop item, there's no formal action to be taken this evening. Really, we're looking to see your feedback, what questions you might have about this. And in general, really wanted to introduce the concept and explain it a little bit further with a little bit more time than what we had during strategic planning. So if you start to see contracts coming through on consent agenda as IDC-type contracts, that they're not foreign, and you're comfortable with the concept and with us exploring that option. If you are comfortable with that, we would recommend that you let us try it out, see how it works, and come back and let you know if it's starting to address some of these challenges that we're having of getting responsiveness. If you're okay with it, our next steps would be to go ahead and coordinate with finance to issue these two RFQUs and see who we get pre-qualified. At that point, if you ask me a really technical procurement question, I've got my ace in the hole. Ms. Felicia Roth is here as well, but happy to try to address any issues, questions, concerns you might have.
Questions?
I'll start, Kim. What, who pays Gordian? I think it's a great idea. I like the concept. I'm just trying to...
It's built into the cost that we get from the general contractor. So we do not contract nor pay Gordian, but they have an arrangement with their regionally-approved general contractors, and I'm doing this because there are three of them. And so their cost of, if you will, for lack of a better term, a finder's fee.
Yeah, headhunter, same.
Exactly. Is built into their relationship with each one of those GCs that they've got a relationship with. Eventually, that's obviously then a pass-through to the town, right? Because that cost of Gordian is built into that GC's contract with us.
Nobody works for free. The second question, when you build this pool or authorize this pool, what are you thinking? Are we talking about four or five construction companies? Are we talking about 15 or 20?
I think in our area, just looking to what we typically get in a response, I'm thinking underneath each one, a horizontal and a vertical, hopefully three, three in each one, each pool. If we can, and then some of this depends on how we work through finances, we've been talking about this. Right now, we're still approaching these projects fiscal year by fiscal year. And so that's why there's no minimum and no maximum guarantee necessarily, because our budget runs that way. If we have a funding source, say, for instance, like the geo-bond for sewer-ing, and we can say, in the next five years, we've got $5.25 million to issue in sewer-ing, then that might draw in more from out-of-town as general contractors. Initially, I would think they'd be smaller.
Okay. So time passes, the economy changes, you know, we go into somewhat of a slowdown mode, possibly, here in another two or three years. What would a company have to do to be added to the list? You know, a new company, my young person that lives here, whatever, that wants to get on board? How would that be handled?
Typically, through, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Felicia. Typically, what we do is, when we issue a contract, we have an annual renewal each year for a span not to exceed five years. And then after that five years, we rebid our contracts, our master services agreements. Any, I was going to say, am I misspeaking?
No, you're not. Do you think the council, Felicia Roth?
Yes, and so it would be at the end of that five-year term that we would put that out for bid, and a new company would have an opportunity to become qualified, but not in the interim.
Who are we putting that out to bid to? I mean, the contract, we're putting it out to bid, so I'm a little confused. Bid means send me a...
It's through vendor registry. So every opportunity that the town has available to a contractor of any sort is, Ms. Felicia handles all of that, right, through vendor registry. And so whether it's restoration of the Squire Pope House, whether it's Bridge Street, Streetscape, all of those opportunities are out there, and those solicitations are what we're talking about, individually bidding projects. What we would do with an RFQU, and what we've done in the past with, say, engineering services, put out an RFQU, these are the general broad scope of services that we are anticipating occurring under this contract. Submit to us your qualifications. So in this instance, we would say, if we're bundling up the horizontal, we anticipate you working on sewer, streets, sidewalks, potentially maybe some hardscape in parks or what have you, that type of thing. And folks who are qualified, general contractors, who are qualified over that type of work, would submit with their qualifications, general information like that. Then we have our local vendor preference, what have you. Same as vertical construction, if we're talking about restoration, stabilization, renovations, general, you know, maintenance that's hitting that capital threshold.
So if I'm hearing you right, you're going to advertise it, reach out to the construction industry. You're going to check their credentials, say, "Yep, you meet us, you meet what we're looking for." So you'll send them a letter of acceptance or something, I guess? I mean, there's no, or a contract to be...
So the way that it works currently with a master services agreement, we have a very broad general scope of work in a particular category, as Kim said. So maybe it's civil engineering or land planning, and we've got a broad scope of work, and we advertise it publicly, and we get responses, and we look at those, their past projects, we look at the resumes of their personnel, and we pick the best qualified three, four, five contractors. And we say, "Now that we know that you're the best, give us your hourly rates for all these job titles. When we have work that comes up, we're going to go to a Wood and Partners, or we're going to a firm and say, 'Here's a scope. We'd like you to tell us the level of effort. How much would it take, each job title, to fulfill this contract? Give us a quote.'" We can match those hourly rates against what's on contract, and look at the level of effort and say, "Yes, we accept." So they'll have a master contract with all their hourly rates locked in for the year, and then a task order authorization to do a particular scope of work. And so we'll do that, and as Kim said, it's typically renewable. They have the opportunity to adjust their pricing on an annual basis, assuming they give us the appropriate notice. And, you know, there's some flexibility here. Five years is a great term to have, but we could do it the way that we do the police towing contracts, where it's on a rolling basis. We could say, "Hey, you know, at this time of year, if you're a new company, we'd like to invite you to submit a qualifications package." It doesn't mean that it's to the detriment of the others, because we have no guaranteed minimums. We're not saying, "Company XYZ, you will get $50,000 worth of work from us this year." We're not guaranteeing any of that. So there is room to add someone if they are potentially qualified and have a good work history, and we think they'd be a good fit for us, and we can try them out on a few task orders and see how it works.
So the scope, the project, just say a sewer project, 2BA or whatever, that will go to everyone in that lock box, that, all of those contractors would be able to bid?
We wouldn't typically open up a project to everyone that's under a master services agreement. The advantage is, we can control the workflow. So if we know we've been, a vendor is particularly busy, we can go to someone else that we have a contract with and say, "Quote us this." We could go to multiple and say, "Quote us this task order. What is the level of effort that's required?" We typically don't do that. We have an option to do that if we want, but we like to rotate through, control the workflow and the schedule.
I would think that the scheduling, what we're running into while we're going, or thinking about this, that's the issue. You know, I mean, we have things we need to get done, and nobody has the time to do them. So, I mean, I like the competitive part of, say, "Here it is, who's going to do it?" You know, that's just my opinion. But that's all I have for right now. Thank you. I think it's a great change or action from the old change.
It's doing something. It's doing something.
I have a question and a comment. I'll comment first. I do like the option. I was concerned with going this route, if we would box out the opportunities of smaller or local vendors who we may have used in the past, but you provided that, if we wanted to, you know, supersede that and go with someone, that option is there, so that, I think that's great. My next question is, in vetting the company that's being referenced here, do we have information on their track record in terms of like how this is working out for Dorchester County? And I'd like to hear about that.
Oh, yeah. Felicia did her homework on that one.
We do. So the issues that Dorchester County is having, that prompted them to issue this in the first place, are different than ours. They are larger, and they have larger projects. They were having internal issues getting the bids out, and they were getting change ordered to death. So they didn't have a good cost control measure. So someone, it would be competitively bid, someone would provide the cheapest price, and then ask for these changes. "Well, we didn't anticipate this, we didn't anticipate that," and then nickel and dime them to get the price up as the project is underway. We don't have that issue. We have really great project managers who spec out the scope in a detailed manner. They walk these sites with the contractors, so that when we get bids back, they're very specific. So we don't typically get those kinds of change orders. We'll only get change orders for really unforeseen circumstances, which is a fantastic track record, and kudos to our project managers for that. So it's a different kind of issue that they had. So what Dorchester County, the benefits for them, were locking in those line item prices, and then it's a matter of the level of effort. What's it going to take to get this done? That said, in talking to them, what I have found is that it is very expensive for them. So they know what the line items cost, but they've got, you know, in their region, a number of general contractors who will then sub it out. So now you've got a subcontractor, a general contractor markup, and a Gordian markup. So they'll know what the price is, it's just going to be expensive, but they know that they're going to get the work done. So that's the trade-off, is we know we'll have someone to bid it, which is our issue, but it's probably going to be more expensive than if we could have a local vendor perform it. But if we have no local vendor who says that they want to step up and do the work, then we have to decide, do we want to go with a sure thing, even though it might be more expensive? And so that is the judgment call that we would have to make, and having all of these contractual options available to us gives us that flexibility.
The question was more so for like Gordian's, their track record, like, are they able to balance or keep up with the amount of projects that Dorchester have?
I didn't get any negative feedback as far as that goes. These contractors have a national, the general contractors, in some cases have a national footprint. These are some big companies. So, for example, we put out an inquiry to them, we bid out Buck Walter...
Buck Island.
Buck Island Drainage.
Drainage.
And it's an SC DOT-owned road, so we have to comply with those specifications, very, very detailed. We got zero local bids. No one wanted to bid that job for us. So I went to Gordian, and I said, "Hey, how'd you like to take a nibble at this?" They said, "Great, send us a scope." Well, they didn't have any SC DOT-approved contractors. And they said, "Well, we've got one that's Florida DOT-approved. Let's see if we can maybe fast-track an SC DOT approval." And the answer came back, "No." And interestingly, they said, "We cannot get SC DOT-approved." And I asked, "Why not?" So I'm waiting to hear back on that. So they can't do everything, and so we just have to find that sweet spot. You know, if it was not Buck Island Road, under the auspices of the South Carolina Department of Transportation, it would be different, and they would be able to perform on it. And what would happen then is, we would get the quote, our project manager would meet them out at the site, they would walk it to make sure they understood every nuance, and within two weeks, we would get a quote back. If we decide not to take it, we don't have to take it. It's just their proposal to us.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton?
I remember having this discussion earlier, and council gave some recommendation. I think one of the recommendations that I remember was to bring in the contractors that we were already working with to find out, what are we doing wrong? Basically, are we pricing the jobs where they can't perform? Have we had that conversation?
So that was that initial slide that I put up, of the three most common answers when we ask, "Why are we not getting responses?" We go back to our local folks and ask them, "Hey, why, John Lopat, why did you not bid this job?" And he's told us, "I'm too busy. I don't have time for it. You guys need it in a timeframe, I don't need it." Sometimes they've said that we don't have the staffing, we have a staffing shortage. "I'm busy enough with where I am, I don't have the capacity to take on additional work." And then we've hit this in a couple of instances, where the budget has not been in line with what we've had approved, from, again, the engineer, the design engineers estimate a probable cost. By the time, by the time we get bids back in, the market supply and the chain supply right now is just crazy. So the budget has been busted. So yes, sir, we have done that homework that you asked us to do.
Okay. But I see that still being the issue, no matter who we use. If you use Gordian, that's still going to be the issue. The number's going to change.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the number won't change, because that is where they have that price list of, was it 2,600 items? It was extensive. So that we know for reinforced concrete pipe that's this diameter, it's going to cost us this much per foot of it. And they can build that into the actual quote.
But, Kim, the numbers will change, because they're going to bid, they're going to bid two-years' price for us. They're going to say what this might cost in two years. That's how they're going to bid it. So we're going to pay for it regardless. My point is, we made a commitment many years ago to always employ local contractors. And I'm a strong advocate to take care of our own. And if we get anyone outside of that parameter, we're not putting money back in our economy. We're not taking care of people that we feel are our own. And how are we going to control that when we use Gordian?
Typically, what they do is, again, they have the general contractors, and the general contractors will try to get the local folks on site, because it's easier to mobilize them. But they can guarantee, as they're moving through areas, sometimes more volume of work, they will go local, because it's typically cheaper for them than to pull in somebody from out-of-state. So they're going to try to go local. And again, it's not precluding or saying, "Our local folks can't also benefit from this and be pre-qualified and go under the RFQU and the IDC contract." Gordian is just another option. For instance, as Felicia just said, we had zero bids on Buck Island. Had it been Bridge Street, or had it been Pritchard Street that we owned, Gordian would have been a perfect slip-in. Nobody local bid it. Nobody local... Nobody local responded. At the least, maybe, and, and getting Gordian in and through their GC, they might get, if it's not a local general contractor, maybe at least a local, smaller vendor who could work on it.
Okay. Your language was, they could use local contractors.
They could.
Can we change that language? They must use local contractors.
I don't know. I'm gonna go to the lawyer. I, I think we could build in that restriction, but we might then be faced with the same problem, that they cannot find someone to do the job. So I think there's a lot to be said for the discretion and judgment of staff, to say, we tried to find local, no one would bid the job, therefore, if we wanna get the work done, we have to look elsewhere. So it's nice, I think, to have an option. I think our preference is to work with folks that we know, uh, in a competitive, you know, bid process, uh, very transparent. But, you know, we tend to know our contractors. We know the same folks that bid on jobs time and time again, and so when they don't bid, it speaks volumes to us, and we understand that they're having trouble finding staffing. But I do recommend that we consider having an option when no one bids locally.
And, and that would be the key, is that Gordian would be the last resort. We wouldn't start with them if, if we can't get it from any other staff. They would just be an option we would have if we got nobody else throughout the process that could do it. So it's not, we're gonna go to them first and exclude anybody else. They would be, if we can't get anybody else, they would be that last kinda line that we could go to and try to find somebody to do the work.
So that'd be a tool in the box.
Correct. And the last tool we would reach for.
All right. So, for clarity, because of the issue with contractors, which is universal, right? You're just trying to build a bigger package, right? That's really what you're trying to do. Instead of going out with one job that might be worth 150,000 or 200,000, and you're getting the no bids, you're trying to lump a whole lot more into the box, to make the whole thing more attractive, to bring in the players who are willing to do it, who are not gonna do it otherwise, because they haven't been, because they're busy elsewhere. Is that what we're trying to say here?
It could be, yes, it definitely could be that approach.
Right. And that's where, that's where it gets a little complicated at the local level. I do see that. I've helped with that professionally in the past.
And I would also add that if, that timing plays into that, too.
Sure.
Because it allows us to be more flexible on when we can actually, because right now, we bid, and we say we wanna complete 120 days, they're like, I'm booked for 120. So it gives us flexibility as well, besides the, the larger pricing, the larger project.
Now, the five-year criteria, four, five, five's a long time in this kinda world. Things, to Fred's point a minute ago, things change rapidly. I've known professionally that when the economy is really booming, a lot of people that were locked in a five-year contract would just leave, because they don't wanna be stuck with those old rates. When the economy goes south and the recession kicks in, then everybody's beating your door down trying to find work. Is that a net statement?
Yes, sir. And these are annual renewals.
Right.
So it's just a year contract with four options to renew. So if they find that their business model doesn't support, you know, prioritizing town work, and they can't fulfill the task orders, and they say, please just stop asking us, then we would honor their wishes and stop asking.
Okay. The, where I get tripped up a little bit, and pardon me for this, is, so you're building something that's attractive, instead of 100,000, maybe you're gonna go to a million, or 2 million, or 3 million, whatever the number would be. But you talk about the $100,000 number, which is the tripwire with council. So how does that work exactly if you got somebody to come in, you've got a big package, you're gonna say, well, we're bidding this big package for X amount of dollars, is what you're saying? Give us your price?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
So then if they win that bid, and then they need to extend it $100,000, which is kinda like what the master agreements are for, you're gonna say, okay, we're gonna bring that back to council? Is that what I heard?
Well, if it's a task order underneath a master services agreement, anything that exceeds $100,000 is gonna cross your desks.
Okay.
So you would always have that discretion to say, Felicia, that is, that is not realistic. That's too big, we don't support you signing that contract, signing that task order. You always will have that discretion.
Okay. And the last part of this is, in the economy, the way it has been, you'll have to factor cost, uh, cost of living index into their contract, right?
Annual review.
Annual, annual review.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay.
They have most of my questions. I guess I've, one on Gordian, I looked them up, they're upstate. I don't, I've never heard of them. Is there not someone like them closer in the Low Country, where people speak the same language? And do we pay them no matter what? Are we, are we paying them whether we use them or not?
We don't pay them at all, actually. So, uh, they get their fee from the general contractor. So if you dug deep enough into the Gordian site for South Carolina, you'd see they broke the state up into regions, and whatever region number Low Country is in, they have three approved general contractors. In fact, among their regions, I don't think they have more than three in any of their particular regions, but, uh, they have three that have committed to do work in the Low Country. And if we were to, as a last resort, say, no one local bid this job, Gordian, please take a look, see if you got one of your contractors who would be willing to bid this, and they would say, yes, we can. Um, you know, then, then we pay, we contract with that general contractor directly, but in those fees, in that pricing index, that's under contract, that's where Gordian would get paid.
I just, you had said something about setting Chris up with something if y'all move forward. I just didn't know if we paid them upfront, something.
No, no, no. That was in reference to what Councilman Wood said. If we say we bundle all of our sewer together, and that's a multimillion dollar package, that could be something that comes out of an IDC.
Um, and they all would have to have business licenses. I would think Gordian would, too. Um, I mean, I think it's good. I would urge you to, I mean, I, I wish, I don't see news on social media about bids going out as much as I do see about employment or other things. I wish we would go a little further. We have a contractor in the audience that didn't speak at public comment, but maybe you can get him. I mean, I, I don't know that I've seen the day where we brought them all in to say, hey, guys, you know, what, what's going on? Not just the two or three. So I kinda followed Fred on, let's not use them as a crutch.
A bigger effort on that.
We still need to work and get our locals in and think out of the box. But I think you, you're thinking out of the box.
Well, I, I don't know, and I'm just gonna make this comment, but what, what things kinda, I've been following this and asking questions for a long time now. I think the restrictions for that, that every town has, you know, a government job, just all the stuff, all those requirements that we have to have before we can hire someone, probably is more than a lot of our small companies want to deal with. You know, whether it's the amount of their bond, their insurance, you know, the amount of insurance, their, the high levels of requirements that government has on their contractors. They can, they can go work on somebody's backyard and make more money.
The grant is associated with it.
Hopefully, some of these larger companies, some of these smaller local people could become subs for these bigger companies that have all the credentials that we require for them to do our jobs. That's just my thought.
That is true. Finally, one last thing. You'd mentioned the state road. We have a lot of state roads, so that cuts out a lot of our projects with this Gordian. So I, I think it's good to, let's try, maybe some large, smaller companies can get together and say, oh, over three years, I can do this, I can fit you in six months, nine months. So, good for thinking.
And that's what we're hoping, is when we have a bigger timeframe and bigger pot, we can get more interest from our locals.
Well, good. Okay. Did you take notes?
Just, yes, ma'am. One thing to add, though, uh, mayor, your concern about publicly communicating. So, uh, we can certainly add that to our social media. We've got a contract, that solicitation out to bid, but what we use is a, a third party, it's called Vendor Registry, to do business with the town. A business will sign up, and they'll get notifications. So what they'll do is, they'll enter in their business information, and it's all free, and they specify what their area of business is. I'm a landscaper, I'm a general contractor, whatever their business is. And then when I publish a solicitation, it will push out a notification to everyone who's in that particular category. So people far and wide get an email when I publish a solicitation in a particular scope of work. So, yeah, it's kinda, I can, I'm happy to give you a tour of it.
Love to see it.
It's, um, it's a great, it's a great service. Beaufort County uses Vendor Registry. I believe Hilton Head also uses Vendor Registry, it's very commonly used.
Good.
And so people do get notifications of that, and then they submit their packages electronically, which is fantastic.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all. We have a formal item. Um, I guess you took notes from our, um, the first formal item is, um, back on the agenda, as promised, consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between Beaufort County and the town of Bluffton for the purpose of imposition and collection at the time of issuance of building permit of school development impact fees on all new residential development within the town. Richardson, you're gonna provide us an update, and let us know what we really have been doing on this. So you're up.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, mayor, members of council, thank y'all for having me tonight. For those of y'all in the audience who I have not had an opportunity to meet, my name is Richardson LaBrus. I'm with Finger Melnick, Brooks and LaBrus, and I'm filling in tonight for Terry Finger, who is the town attorney. Y'all's consideration on the agenda is the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Beaufort County for the imposition and collection of school development impact fees. As you may recall, for a little bit of, from just background, a little bit of background, back in February at the town council meeting, y'all requested some comments, y'all had some comments about the proposed IGA, and you had requested some revisions, in particular about the ability of Beaufort County to raise the impact fee up to 50% of what it initially was. Questions about the affordable housing component of it, and a couple of other different issues. Because of those discussions from county, uh, because of some of those discussions in that direction from council, our firm went out and started communicating with Beaufort County directly about the agreement, and trying to rework the agreement to better respond to y'all's concerns. One of the ways that we had looked into doing that was revising the agreement to streamline that process. And, uh, the agreement that we ultimately have been working on since February is not the agreement that's before you tonight, and there is a reason for that. So the agreement that y'all have in your package, and for consideration, is essentially the exact same version that was before you in February. And we're, that's not because of a lack of effort or a lack of work on staff's part or our part, or any issues on, on y'all's end. It's rather a, um, an issue because recently, the county has started this process.
There's nothing playing.
Not saying anything, Bruce.
It was Joe.
Joe, stop it!
It is, the, uh, the county has started the process to revoke all impact fees. So as, as you may know, and I, I'm sure you know, but members of the public as well, they, the county has had first and even second reading last night, uh, second out of three readings, to revoke all impact fees. From our perspective, it made little sense to bring a proposed new agreement before y'all, when the county is in the process of revoking all those impact fees. Now, that's not to say that the county is going to go ahead and revoke all impact fees on third reading. We're not really sure what the county's next steps will be. Uh, but at this time, again, it, there is just, there are too many questions to really present this for you for consideration, to have you adopt an intergovernmental agreement, be a resolution, and contractually bind yourself to a process that the county may not continue forward. So what we would recommend to council, and ultimately, it is your decision on how to move forward, is to allow us to continue discussions with the county about the impact fee, continue to discuss the possibility of streamlining this process for the county, continue the discussions about some of the affordable housing concerns that council has raised, and some of the other concerns about the impact fee, and just continue to move forward in those directions. Again, we don't know whether this process is done at this point. This is primarily being spearheaded by the county. Continue to, continue to work with them, and try to discuss the different possibilities that y'all have, and that the county has for impact fees. And we don't know if the county is going to revive, um, revive this process, revive the impact fees, or whether they're gonna continue forward with third reading. So at this point, my recommendation to y'all would be to postpone a decision on this, this particular agenda item, the consideration of the resolution and the intergovernmental agreement, and just allow that to remain open-ended until we have more of an explanation from the county as to their, as to their proposed, um, progress on it. I, and I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all may have. I know this has been discussed at length, so, any questions from council?
I agree.
Well, maybe a question, but based on what you're telling us, and what I saw in a county council meeting, you've been talking to their attorney, staff's been talking to staff on the school impact fees, and we've always wanted questions answered on the affordable housing, um, side, because as, um, Fred and others on this council, you know, we just don't know, and we just wanted an answer. And we all have to remember, we're just collecting. We don't, we're not charging. We're just collecting the fees on behalf of the county, or we're not collecting them on the behalf of the county. Right?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. And so, obviously, the, the school impact fees haven't, haven't been imposed, at least according to the county, in Beaufort, or, excuse me, in the town of Bluffton. So, uh, at this point, it's just a discussion as to how those will be collected and imposed in the future. We have been in communication, there are a number of different issues, and because this is such a highly regulated, regulated area of the law, it's relatively new, the ability to impose, uh, impact fees for school facilities is, is a relatively new amendment to the Impact Fee Act. Uh, and then there's been recent case law that has helped us to kind of look into some of the concerns that we have a little bit more aggressively, and a little bit more thoroughly, from a, you know, York County cases, to what we saw with the, albeit a little bit different, the road fee that had been at issue in Greenville County. So there are a lot of questions that we really needed answered, and that we are continuing to flesh out with the county attorneys, and they've, you know, they've been responsive, but it's just, it's, it's a complicated process. It's a difficult process, and it's one that we wanna make sure that if it's going to be done, it's gonna be done right.
So, so in the way they're, um, the impact ordinance states, the county is the one who sets the impact fee, period. And they really don't need our, our say on it. We just say, we'll collect it, or we won't collect it. And by the way, these are some items we really like for you to address. And I feel like that's what this council has done. Um, Dan, Jimmy might bring it up, the sliding scale, which is something I hope you go back and discuss with them, um, size of house and, um, and affordable housing.
Absolutely.
So simple. That's all, those were our questions, so.
Absolutely. And so it, we've got some direction from y'all on how to continue forward with this. If the county decides they want to continue forward with their impact fee, uh, we have direction from you as to the preferred way that y'all would have this done, and how the town, and what the town's role would be in that, which is, i- i- again, is very limited. It's a county, it's a county impact fee. So, um, again, we, we've got direction from town council over the last few meetings, and we feel like we're confident that where there's a, there's a process here. But it, again, it's in the, right now, it's in the county's hands with their process to revoke it.
Okay. But we have been communicating since we got it sent to us. So I do, I think it's in their hands to decide what they want. I mean, it's, they're the ones that are charging it.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
So, any other questions? Do you, he suggested we table this?
Move that we table it.
I have some comments, too, though.
So let's, let's second it, and then we'll discuss.
Second.
Okay. Um, discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna convey the message to our friends at the county, and they are our friends, and, uh, you know, this is, uh, it's been complicated, the school impact fee has been complicated for this council. And we have been trying to do our due diligence, and we're sorry if we've ruffled feathers in the process. But that being said, you know, for example, one of the things that tripped me up just that being said, you know, for example, one of the things that tripped me up just recently is an April 7 letterhead came out from the county talking about the AMI levels. Instead of just one at 60%, there was others on there that was purely listed or clearly listed at the bottom of the form. And so I'm seeing that just a few days ago, and I'm thinking to myself, you read the contract and it says something entirely different. So I was confused by that. That's one of the reasons that, you know, we're having this continued dialogue. And there were some other items in there as well that, that need to be addressed, which you will address with them. I guess the only other comment that I would like to throw on the table for all of us to consider is there's four other impact fees to be considered. And some of them may be a little more cut and dry than the school impact fee. So we have been bogged down as a council on the school impact fee, but maybe something like EMS or some others might not be as complicated, which I think is still good for the county for assault to pursue that. At the end of the day, whether they keep the impact fees or they do away with the impact fees, at the end of the day, if we do away with the possibility of the impact fees, then everybody ends up with a tax on top of them because there's no other way to do this. So that's the only message I'm just trying to send back to our friends at the county. Nothing they don't realize. But again, maybe we need to just rethink this, cool our jets a little bit, maybe revisit even some of the other impact fees while we work out the kinks of the school impact fee. Thank you.
And Councilman Wood, I think, if I may, I think that's a great point because one of the main issues that we're trying to work out is that you have a county impact fee, you have the municipalities, and, excuse me, you have multiple county impact fees adopted via ordinance. And we have various municipalities that may have intergovernmental agreements with the county. Each of those intergovernmental agreements may say something different. So for example, Bluffton's proposed intergovernmental agreement with the affordable housing component that 60% below be, be covered, but 60 to 80% be a more graduated fee, and then 80 to 100% as we proposed to the county. Well, Hilton Head may not have that. Hardyville may not have that. And so to, I think this opportunity gives us a good, or excuse me, this, the county's reconsideration of this, this kind of holding pattern that we're in is giving us an opportunity to really review thoroughly the process, the intergovernmental agreements. What can we do to streamline this, to make it clear for each impact fee as it goes forward so that the consideration before you is not so many different things. This is a county-proposed impact fee. The studies are being done by the county. They're, they're providing the justification for the numbers and, and things like that. But that's something that obviously, we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to consider the factors, but also not be so, also not be trying to negotiate some of these agreements when you have other municipalities negotiating different parts of this agreement or providing different graduated scales. And I think this is, again, this could provide a really wonderful opportunity for all of Beaufort County to address an issue that needs to be addressed, that needs to be clarified, and needs to be cleaned up for the benefit of the entire community. So this is, I think you brought up some good points.
But there's, with the repeal across the board, I would think you would tell us there's nothing we can do until it goes back to the county. I mean, I talked to Dan about the EMS, you know, that seemed so easy, but they have voted to repeal it. So there's nothing for us to vote on.
No, there's not at the moment. But again, we don't, we're not really certain what the county's next steps could be. It could be a repeal and then a reconsideration of a new revised impact fee. It could be a flat-out repeal with no impact fees ever considered again, or it could be, they, it could fail on third reading and the impact fee could stay in place. And so we don't, there are a number of different options at this point, and that's why postponing a decision on this issue tonight, we think is in the best, the best interest of the town, because it'll give us an opportunity to flesh out some of these options, figure out a little bit more discussion, continue to discuss with the county our options that are available to us, and see what happens. And we'll, obviously, we'll be back, we'll be back in a month or two to talk to you about what's going on and try to give you an update. And I'm, I'm sure you'll, I know y'all will keep up with it as well, but for members of the public, make sure that they know what's happening.
I agree. Okay. Any other comments?
The only thing I would add, just for the record, is they've reached out to the county, and they're working with all the mayors and managers to find a time that we can all get together. We're hoping to do that next week. So to address some of these items that Richardson has, has outlined. So just wanted everybody to know that we are still working together with the county, as was stated earlier. And we're hoping to continue to move that forward as this discussion takes place.
Okay. There's a first motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor to table? We don't have a date. Is that okay? Just table? Okay. State by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Got unanimous. Thank you, Richardson, for staying on top of this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, members of council.
Absolutely. Next formal item is consideration of amendments to the Town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Article 5, Section 5.3, Section 5.3. We've done this revised first reading. Okay. I'm just ditto. He writes ditto. His pay, it's too long.
That's fine. So I'm not Kevin Eichert. I'm Heather Colen. So.
Why? He's not here.
No, he's not here. So last month, we passed unanimously proposed amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, that tamed to trees. I can go through this whole presentation, but just wanted to summarize why I'm here again for revised first reading, is that ordinance and those UDO amendments really complement what recently was approved with the regional stormwater ordinance that Soloco initiated and that you passed, those stormwater changes and regulations. So with that, the same provisions apply. This would apply townwide. And so what we did after we went through those UDO amendments, getting prepared for second reading and public, or public hearing and second and final reading, really wanted to explain the story better in the actual ordinance language. So those whereas clauses, those recitals. So explain why these, why these amendments are moving forward, why they apply townwide. So again, that we can tell the story, explain, explain why we're proposing those amendments, and how we got here, and why they, and how they apply. So wanted to make sure that that was buttoned up really tight and make sure that, again, that story was explained as best as we could tell it. So the most appropriate and the recommendation we had to move forward was to do a revised first reading rather than move forward. And this really only delays the applicability of those amendments by one week, because should you approve the revised first reading, then we would bring forward the public hearing and the second and final reading at next week's workshop, now special town council meeting, if there's action taken. So that's why I'm here today. Again, just wanted to make sure that we told that story really well, really clear, make sure that those expectations were understood by everybody moving forward. And I can bring up the ordinance language. I can go through the presentation or just go to the motion, whatever you'd like.
I just had a question. I remember Councilman Tumer had, had some questions with the initial proposal, and I just wanted to see where we were on that. I know the two were, to what the fee would be, and then what would the, the suggested trees be to make sure that someone wouldn't try to replace, you know, a oak with some, you know, something not comparable.
What we're doing right now is we're pulling together all that information and it, like, an example, I think is the best way to answer those questions, or at least kind of how I get there, and can, we can answer there, but bring forward of an example on what that would look like and how the ordinance would apply. So what it would look like if you had to replant all those trees, what those species would be to your question. And then also, if you could not, you know, plant those trees for whatever reason, what that fee would be and how we would move forward. So that's what we're bringing forward to you next week.
Thank you, Heather. Didn't we possess the pending doctrine? Or do we remember? Can we, can we? We did it?
Don't think so.
I thought we did on something. Okay. Any other thoughts? That motion is fine. Stand up there. So we're doing a revised first reading. If there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve the amendments to the Town of Bluffton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Article 5, Section 5.3, specific to Section 5.33, and Section 5.37 and 5.38? And y'all all know the words in between that.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I hope that's appropriate. Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we'll see it next week? Next, Heather, now you're really up. Have consideration of a resolution to adopt the Town of Bluffton Strategic Plan for fiscal years 2023 and 2024. Excited about this?
Okay, so back in February, we met and talked about the strategic plan. We met as a group with town staff, town council, the public, representatives of our boards and committees and commissions, as well as some of our partners, to really map out kind of what we're going to do and how we're going to allocate town resources for the next two years. So what the action I'm requesting of you all tonight is to approve through a resolution, adopting and formalizing that town strategic plan for the next two fiscal years. Again, just to recap, what we did a couple months ago, you know, really was meant to identify those planning objectives and actions that provide the policy guidance, guidance with managing those town resources and whether that's town staff time, money, budget, and things like that. And this just kind of outlines the agenda as far as what we did and, and how we went through. We always pull it back to our town mission and vision up here on the screen. So how do we, how do we focus on this? How do we meet that mission and that vision? And we do always look at it again. Is this still appropriate? At this time, we believe, yes, yes, it is still appropriate and move forward. The strategic focus areas, there's seven of them. Again, we continue to look at that. Are these still the seven things we need to look at? Do we need to change, modify, add, or delete any? The last time I believe that we were here, we do this every two years, we added, you know, the affordable housing component. So we do add and change over time. But at this point, it was identified that these are still all very important and what we should still keep our focus on. So what we did as part of that is we have our two-year plan, like I said, and what, the first part of this is really go through and figure out what we've done. Have we completed all the action items that were set forward? I believe there was a little bit over 90 of them at the time. Some of them are policy and things we do day-to-day. And the reason why those are first in this strategic plan is to establish that day-to-day, establish those standard operating procedures. How do we get there? So some things that you saw on previous strategic plans, you may not see anymore on the plan moving forward. For example, the budget process. It's something we do every year. We've established a process. We've been strategic about it and outlined that. Just because you don't see it in the strategic plan doesn't mean we don't do that. That's exactly what the finance department does all the time and day-to-day. But again, that's already been established. So that's worked through. This slide here has some of the accomplishments on what we have done in the past two years. Lots of amendments to our Unified Development Ordinance. Again, those are all outlined. Some are still in the process. And so what we do on that strategic plan action agenda item is outline responsible departments, a timeframe, really kind of a pipeline of how to get there so that we make sure that we, again, map out our resources to meet your expectations. I won't read through all of this, but again, this is a highlight of some of those things. Again, programs, policies. You'll see all of our capital improvement projects on the strategic plan outlined through there. A lot of things that we've done, community surveys, asked both internally, town staff and employees, as well as the citizens, how are we doing? What can we do more of? What can we do better? How should we shift? So make sure that we have that figured out in here, as well as historic preservation. That was something that was very strategic because we had to put forward those programs and kind of establish that baseline moving forward. After going through this, then we said, okay, what, what do we need to adjust? Some of the projects, we expanded. For example, historic district accessibility at intersections in the previous strategic plan. It was very focused to ADA in the historic district. So then it was discussed, we should expand that. Buck Island-Simmonsville, Gothy Road, what about lighting and make a more all-encompassing? So that was modified and changed. So things like that that we do change. And then what new things should we add? What other things do we need to do to move forward and continue on? This is a highlight of some of those things that are in the plan, from the growth management department and division, finish that comprehensive plan update, get that through the adoption process. And then what are the next plans to update? So the neighborhood plans, Buck Island-Simmonsville Neighborhood Plan, Gothy Schultz has a neighborhood plan, the Old Town Master Plan. So move forward and continue on. Same with watershed and those capital improvement projects. What we have here, and I can pull it up, but next steps, if you do approve this through resolution, would be that town staff would put that document together in a, in a final product that we could distribute to staff, our partners, council boards and committees, so that they have that readily available, their playbook, so to speak, their how-to, their manual on moving forward. And then also put it online so that it's a live document, so that you can see what are we doing, how are we moving forward, you know, that process. This is a very robust program that we currently use. So there's all sorts of different ways that we can get that out to the public. And after today, we'll figure out what's the easiest way for us to review it. Like I said, I'm happy to pull that up. Just had the link here. But again, it's very, there's a lot of information that we put out there, but really the goal is to make sure that that's updated live, so that you know we haven't forgotten about updating a plan. Or yes, we're looking at intersection alignment. Yes, we're training our boards and commissions, and here's the projected timeframe. We also include notes and pretty much everything. That's kind of our gatekeeper of the next two years. So that's where we're at right now. Like I said, I can pull that up if you have any questions or discussion on that. And then the recommended motion. And then I will also add, we do every year meet again as a staff to readjust if we need, if we need to change those action items or how we need to regroup. And right now, we're proposed to, I believe, do that in November. And again, trying to get ahead of the budget planning stage. So if we do need to adjust what we include in the budget and how we use our resources. So we do that every year, and then every two years, a more holistic approach.
Question? I went on airtable. So I have these new things, and we have, it's a very much process. So you're doing airtable for everyone to look at it. They're going to have to know who we collaborate with and who the emails are and all of that. So can someone go through that with us on how we sign up for that?
Yes, of course. What I'd like to do, once we get it in a final, a final package as far as what everyone can look at and do, we'll have a link on the town's website, and I can show you that at a workshop. It's, it does so much right now that I'm hesitant to put the link to just airtable because I don't want someone to get overwhelmed or lost in the process. So that's really why I just want to focus on, you know, making it really simple to read so that you don't get buried.
You didn't read on this report, so I clicked.
It is there.
Sorry.
And we will have the nice.
Tommy-ish.
We will have the nice, the final document, the actually hard copy static document that's approved, if it's approved today via resolution, that will be available online. And then we'll also have it in some sort of print fashion like we've had in the past to get to everybody.
One thing, I remember during the workshop, we, we discussed a green energy plan. And so I went through this, and I may have overlooked it, or there may be a different way we're approaching it. But it's still, I just want to be sure it's still in our mindset.
We can pull that out as a separate action agenda item too, to make it very clear.
It should be in there. I've referenced it to other people numerous, a couple times already, so we'll make sure it's in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve with modification? Well, we don't have any modifications.
Those are your options.
Is it a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the Town of Bluffton Strategic Plan for fiscal years 2023 and 2024?
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Really great call. I added Kim as my work person, so I got in, but I won't get overwhelmed by process. Chris is up, number four under formal agenda items, consideration of a resolution to establish fund agreements with the Community Foundation of the Low Country for several funds. So LUTC 43 Scholarship Fund, Police Benevolence Fund, and a Parks and Public Art Fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
All right. So the background to this is throughout the year, town will frequently receive inquiries from citizens or businesses on how to contribute to the town in various ways. A lot of them come through to PD for various things, whether it's gift cards to buy them lunch, or donation of a grill, or large contributions for certain equipment, whether it be bulletproof vests or for canines. We also will get contributions sometimes for bench, or money for benches to be placed in parks in honor of individuals. Of course, we have the LUTC 43 Scholarship Program, which is a very active scholarship program that is run by the town. And also, we've received inquiries to give money for historical preservation projects. So one of, so right now, we'll get these checks in, you know, right now, they're deposited in the general fund, and they ultimately have to be budgeted by you all as council as expenditure. The department will prepare a donor, or Kim will prepare a donor acknowledgement letter, and it'll be signed by the mayor, town manager, and given to the person who donated funds. Some of the issues that we currently face with the process as a government entity, we're not really set up as a foundation to cultivate. not really set up as a foundation to cultivate donors or community partners in this type of process. There's also, in donating to a government entity, there's kind of a stigma to that. So, in order us to build on our community donations, some people don't want to just donate money to a government entity. There's that stigma around it. Also, there's some tax implications. So, technically, an individual who donates to a government can write it off on their taxes, but the donation has to be used for a public purpose. So, if, if they're donating for Canine Invest, it's hard for them to make a case that it is a public use. If they're donating for the park, for instance, that we're doing, the mental health awareness park that we're doing at the PD, that is not open to the public, again, that would not be a public use, so they wouldn't be able to write that off as their donation. So, the idea is to partner with community foundations or foundations within the community to facilitate these processes of contributing to the community and for various purposes. The four main categories that we typically receive contributions for or request to contribute for are historic preservation, police department support, our scholarship program, and parks and public art. So, we have the, we've been developing the partnership with the Historic Bluffton Foundation for public preservation projects, and that is, we've talked about that at length and is currently on your consent agenda. And then, right now, tonight, on the formal agenda item is our Community Foundation of the Low Country partnership. And you all are very aware of what they do, but they support charitable organizations, nonprofits, government entities, community groups throughout the Beaufort County and Jasper County region. So, the services they provide are the gift administration acknowledgement, they have their online system for accessing activity within your funds, they provide investment services, that's more applicable to endowed funds, they have their grant processing services, and they also have their website for contributing. They handle all of the compliance issues around donations. It's all under their own 501(c)(3). They provide contribution cards and envelopes and trust and gift annuity services and donor services consultation. So, they'll oft, often get individuals with the desire to contribute to the community in some way, but they don't know where to direct their funds. So, they'll show up at the Community Foundation, they'll sit down with them and say, you know, what are you most passionate about? They'll have a conversation, and they'll direct them to funds within the community as options for them to contribute to. So, they'll, they serve as kind of a facilitator for getting funds in that we may not access. So, the fees for these services, non-endowed funds are one and a half percent quarterly, and you must maintain a minimum balance of 500. And then, the endowed scholarship funds are one and three-quarters, and the minimum to endow the fund is 5,000. Now, they can establish the fund initially, and they will work with you to build up that amount to endow it over time, so you don't need that right off the bat. The proposed funds that we have put before you is the Bluffton Police Department Benevolence Fund, and this provides support for the mission programs and services of Bluffton PD. The Bluffton Parks and Public Art Fund to provide support for the development and enhancement of parks and public art within the Town of Bluffton. And then, of course, the Bluffton LETS-E-43 Scholarship Fund. This is the annual scholarship to assist qualified students in, who are Bluffton residents in pursuit of post-secondary education and commit to safe driving. So, the process, how it'd work is donations will be made to the Community Foundation in the name of one of our funds. If there is a donor designation, they would notify us of a donation coming in and what the designation is. We will confirm whether or not that's acceptable, and we want to accept the funds. And then, requests for withdrawal on the funds currently in agreements is listed as being made by the town manager. We will have a further discussion in the future about how, who advises the town manager on, on that process. Ultimately, you all have authority, budgetary authority approval. So, the advisory committee structure will be developed in the future as legally appropriate, and we'll work with Richardson and Terry on that process as well. And then, the, the funds are actually technically the community foundations, and they're segregated based on those fund agreements. So, the Community Foundation reviews those requests, and they ultimately approve or deny it, and they make sure that's consistent with the purpose in which the fund was set up in. And that's for them to protect themselves and their 501(c)(3) status. So, that is the overview. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
I guess, I just have one, just clarification. So, so at a later date, we can do this and add another desire, or another something that we want to add to the list of three.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So, just a quick question, because I read through the letterheads of all the distributions. I thought when we talked, Joe, who are you talking to? Is there another county council or something you'd rather do that? I'm joking with him.
The young and the restless.
What are you watching?
I was like, why can't you?
So...
Butt-dolling yourself.
I think we had discussed at one point about some kind of, some committee set up for the policeman, that you'd have council, maybe two council, you, an officer, like, before those funds are dispersed, can we be sure that we have those committees set up for anything?
Yeah. So, right now, what we're agreeing is the fund agreement is to set up the funds so that funds can be put into it. Now, from the, the, the Community Foundation standpoint, the request for withdrawal of funds would come from the town manager. But internally, we would have to decide on how we advise the town manager on how to request those funds. What we have to be careful of, and Richardson can speak more in detail of this, but what we have to be careful of is setting up committees that are directing dollars, that are, can be considered the town's dollars, because ultimately, you all have that budgetary authority. So, there's some issues legally with setting that up, and whether or not it's appropriate for you to, to appoint all, a majority of those members. So, I don't know if you want to expand upon that.
Well, I just want to make sure we have a say in it, you know, not just having it as the first one, but we, we have a committee to do the LETS-E, and it's, it's been happening in some format. I just don't want it to be distributed, and then there's issues that we might have with that. So, Richardson.
So, before Richardson talks, the...
Your lights red, by the way.
That means it's working, apparently.
Okay.
I found that out the other month when I just hit, and they yelled at me because it turned off. So, the goal, as you know, we have somebody who is wanting to donate a good bit of money to the police right now. We want to be able to accept that and make it work. The goal is we will not draw any of these funds down until we've established what the, the guiding principles and what the process will look like for drawing funds down. Because ultimately, like with the parks and public art, one of our things is in strategic plan that y'all just adopted is to create a public art policy. So, as part of that public art policy, there will probably be a committee that's part of that public art policy that will be an advisory committee on how those funds may be drawn down, spent, so forth. We would look to do something similar for, just like you have with LETS-E for the police benevolence, but then I'll let Richardson talk about the legal aspect of that and what, just as we move forward with setting those up, some of the things to keep in mind, just like we had with the one that we set up for the ARPA funds, just some things like that.
So, from a legal perspective and how we're going to get this, this started, by establishing the funds, you know, the town is going to deposit, what I understand is a, just a minimal amount of money into those as a seed, just to initially establish. But everything else is going to come through private donations. And so, what we're trying to do is make sure that whatever advisory committee is established, it either complies with any FOIA requirements, if there are any, because public bodies, even if you're a nonprofit, if you're accepting public money, you could be considered a public body for FOIA purposes. So, we want to make sure that that is very clear in the way that the advisory committees are established. And also, in particular, with something like a police department benevolence fund, we want to make sure that we follow a lot of the directions that municipalities, counties, police departments have received from the Department of Justice on these sorts of issues because of the potential of legal issues in the future with any sort of police department benevolence fund. So, again, it's just making sure that we do everything the right way, that y'all are protected, and that the charitable intent of these individuals are, is appropriately respected.
And Stephen, help with, really, my biggest thing is we're, it's going to be there, and then we'll figure out, and we'll de-call it out.
And really, what's pushing the timeline is we do have that, somebody who's wanting to donate, I think it's $20,000 to the police department, and we want to be able to make sure we can accept that and put it right. But we are, right now, chief and staff are researching what other police benevolence funds, how they're set up, and what their priorities are. And we've heard from council things, they don't want to stand there without usurping budget authority and that kind of stuff. So, we're making sure that will be put in place and brought back before any actions taken with any of the funds.
Okay. If nothing else? Is there a motion to adopt a resolution to establish fund agreements with the Community Foundation of the Low Country for Bluffton LETS-E-43 Scholarship Fund, the Bluffton Police Department Benevolence Fund, and a Town of Bluffton Parks and Public Art Fund?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Stephen and Richardson. We have a lot of items on consent agendas. Is there anything that you, any of y'all would like to discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
Which one?
Item six.
Item six is the agreement related to Bridge Street, street scape, and roadway improvement. Anything else? Is there a motion to pass the remaining items under the consent agenda with the exception of item number six?
I'll make the motion.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye. Aye opposed? Kim?
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration of a proposed construction contractual agreement relating to the Bridge Street, streetscape and roadway improvement project. Just for everyone to know what you're talking about. Do you have questions?
For council?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question is, the contract is for $1.1 million, and it's on consent agenda. And I'm just wondering if council wants contracts that size to go on consent agenda, or would they prefer them to come to council besides consent agenda? What's your favor?
I think you make a very valid point. And, but I think we already approved this.
No, sir. We just took it off.
Didn't we, didn't we talk about it in the last meeting? Doing Bridge Street, uh, street, street scape?
Now, this is the first time this contract has come before you, sir.
So, just to clarify, it wasn't discussed individually, but it is a, you approved it as part of the budget, so it was discussed as part of the budget process.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's hard to know what those numbers are when it's just on consent. So, we can make sure Stephen and I know to do that when we're looking at the agenda, or we can look at it and pull it off, because it, it is a big amount that needs to be probably more publicly transparent.
Is there a threshold that council wants to set?
Isn't it?
Don't we have a threshold?
Right now, $100,000 goes to y'all. Do you want us to take anything that is a being awarded off of consent and make it an official, make it a formal action item, or do you want to say if it's anything over 500 or anything over a million?
Well, that's the discussion. That's what prompts the question is, you, you want to go over 100, you come back for consent of council.
Correct.
But then, we have a contract, a million plus, and it's on consent agenda. So, the only question I'm asking, again, is, does council feel consent agenda is appropriate, or does council feel that we probably should have our eyes on it a little bit better?
The only thing I would feed in, comment I would give is, you've approved the budget to not exceed a certain dollar amount, and this award is within that dollar amount. That's why it's on consent, because it's not requiring anything more than saying, this is in budget, it's a project that we approved, it's within the budget, we consent to awarding it, authorizing us to sign it. If you think that we need to have more clarity, we can always put a dollar amount as part of the, the language so you know. But if there, if you want to see it come out for action item, for a formal action item, it just, it's kind of, we can pull it out, but I would say if we do it for everyone, it's going to make our agendas a lot longer. If you want to set it for 500 or a million or something like that, I think there would be a few of those that come a year. But if you're going to do it for every one of them, then there would be probably, I think there's master service agreement on here as well, that would have to come out and some other stuff, so it would just be a lot, when, they've already been approved in budget. That would be my only comment.
So, just follow up, what have you gone?
I, I think you're both making good arguments, but when it's like that, can we highlight the fact that we're, we are approving something that's, that's already been in the budget and it's, and it's, it is the, over $100,000? Can we just say that? Because we, we need, Dan is, to Dan's point, I think, is that most of our citizens that read this would not understand all that.
Yeah, we need to be, we need to be acceptable to what their concerns would be. I think we can change some of the language to say, toward the project at X number of dollar amount has budgeted in the budget, and then if you still want to have discussion, we can always pull it off, just like we are now.
I guess I got to go back to, we've been doing this, not like this is something new. Well, I mean, we've, I, I don't remember where I've seen it on the agenda, but maybe the agenda's, and here, I was supposed to say Kevin. But maybe the agenda needs to be a little more specific to award, maybe that's where we've seen it, and it might have been in consent agenda. Um, you know.
That increases clarity. That's super easy.
I think for transparency and...
In the project title, we can put the amount in within budget or as budgeted is.
Oh, you know staff loves to be detailed in our title.
I mean, it's on that.
We've been, we've been telling them to go the other way, so we can always tell them to go back.
Well, it is just thinking through it. I mean, we have, we've approved projects before on our agenda. I just don't remember where it's been put, or was it the wording that we just knew what it was without going into detail of each single item under consent?
Now, I may be bad memory here, but I remember, at least it seems to me, that some time ago, we used to do, some of these contracts did come to council at some point.
Yes, I know they did, yeah.
And then, I remember the debate we had when the previous town manager was here when we gave authorization up to $100,000. So, somewhere along the way, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing at all, somewhere along the way, some of these contracts of this magnitude, when it started going to consent agenda. So, the only point I'm trying to make, and I'm not saying it's good, I'm not saying it's bad, to councilman Hamilton's point, I just think if we're a million-dollar-plus contract, it just feels like we should have a little more eyes on it, you know, than what we're doing, just do a consent agenda. And let me say, in fairness, I don't want to bog us down in red tape with contract after contract, so maybe we work through this and we find, maybe there is a magical number. But when we go through budget, we're looking at numbers, you know, different than what we're looking at here. And we're not getting in to meat or details about, you know, anything, not that we want to get that detail. So, anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to be cautious. That's all I'm trying to do.
Well, but we need to stick with what we, our level is, and if it's 100,000 or more, and we've seen it, we can put absolutely get it on formal items. And I remember, Brian, your version was up there. I've got it. This is the lowest bid. We've asked you, have how many applied?
They go by pretty fast, so...
And it goes really fast, and you're not adding to paper because it's somewhere already. So, if we, we don't, I've always, and Stephen knows this, I get nervous about consent agenda when I'm looking at this, because it seems to be, we could almost start counseling in council with consent agenda. So, maybe a little more deliberate on those $100,000 projects.
So, if they're 100,000 plus, pull them into formal.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it would just, it, it won't take long. It probably would take less time than what we're doing right now, talking about one item.
Three slides. I'm going to give you three slides.
No, three slides. You don't have to give us a slide. You give us this and say...
Well, we give you slides for formal. You get presentations for formal, so you'll get it.
Well, no, but...
Oh, make sure you get it.
You don't have to for this, because we've already talked about the project.
Okay.
Truly, you can give us the staff report and tell us, I can go through it, how many bids do you get? Four. You know, how far off were they? Whatever. And then, it's a quick...
Okay.
We used to get that.
Okay.
I've got a question for you, Kim. This project...
I didn't know he might.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, though, for clarity, again, I need what you want, what you think. Master service agreements? you think. Master service agreements? We've been doing them for a very long period of time. Brian started that. So you, you have 100,000 dollars, but then you see that it needs to run over a little bit. It's master service agreement. I get that. I don't know that we're really wanting master service agreements, because.
And sometimes those are aggregate, right? So for instance, we have, we have some that are just on-call services for engineering services that we think over that potential five years, it might trigger that 100,000. So we want to get it on consent agenda and get it ahead of you. Some of them, we know they're going to be over 100,000, right? Those individual contracts, say, for instance, like this. But some master services, if we anticipate that they're going to trip that threshold, we'll bring them to you ahead of time, well before we've ever even issued a task authorization on them.
But you go, it, it might not be that. We might look at it and move it. It doesn't automatically go to consent. I think we just probably need to be thinking 100,000 over since that's our threshold.
And if that's the way we want to do it, we'll move all of those. And currently for this.
Because it's going to be confusing to you then, like, well, what?
Which one, which one goes where?
Let's just be, let's.
We can swing it back the other way. And if we need to adjust, we can always adjust. And like I said, we may find there's a threshold that makes sense and we, or if it's just a project, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Kim, I think I've discussed this with you, but I just want for clarification. This project is ready to go. How's this going to affect a sewer project that we're doing in the same area?
It's not in the same area. The entire scope of the Bridge Street, Streetscape project will hit what was previously the, the ghost road, the dirt end portion of Bridge Street. This is phase one, and it only comes from Burnt Church to Calhoun. And so for the sewer extension, the historic district phase two sewer extension down what was the ghost road of Bridge Street, and now is ours, we've got that. It, it won't. They're not going to happen at the same time.
So we're not doing anything?
You're not doing anything Calhoun, Hayward.
On bridge between Calhoun and here?
Not in this phase of this project. No.
It's here, but Calhoun and Hayward.
Calhoun and moving west to, toward Thomas Hayward.
Okay.
That's not part of this scope and this contract. This contract is just.
But what I'm saying is, we don't have any sewer work that we need to do between Calhoun and here. I'm saying here.
We're done here. We're done here.
That whole street is finished?
Yep.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we weren't building a street where we got to dig up and put a sewer line.
Nope, nope. We just did that with Pritchard.
Any other questions on item?
I have seen stuff like that.
Any other questions on item number six? No, not sure how to do with the motion with the amount. Um.
It's actually up there. You can just say to award.
That's where I was going. Okay. So is, I mean, to make that big. Is there a motion? I got it. Does that help? Is there a motion?
Maybe not.
No, no, you're, to authorize the town manager to approve a contract for Bridge Streetscape and Bridge Street, Streetscape and Roadway Improvements Phase One to the lowest responsible and responsible bidder, JS Construction Services, has been determined the lowest qualified bidder with a bid of 1,115,494 cents.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Great. Thank you for that. Thank you. All in favor, state by saying aye.
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 I know. I know. I was, I'm sorry. I was re, I was reading. I apologize. I just want to make a clarification, just for the record, is staff requested that 10% contingency.
Well, he so moved it so quickly. Is there an amendment maybe to the, what do we do?
Oh, yeah. Y'all can, y'all can.
I could fix that. Staff, staff can't do that.
I guess they're not doing it.
What we can do is an amendment to a motion, a previously adopted motion.
Do a second motion?
Yes, ma'am. We'll just, we'll characterize it as an amendment of the previous motion. So just, we'll do a second motion.
The second motion on item number six, that staff would also, we would approve staff to request a 10% contingency allowance to cover any unforeseen changes that may arise during construction.
So moved.
Your second. Any discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's unanimous. Are we done with that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn and start enjoying this Easter week?
So moved.
We're done. Happy Easter.